But very. Welcome to the uh committee, the meeting, uh committee, the whole meeting for September tenth. Uh I'll read the acknowledgement first. Down in respectful knowledge is that's located on the first people's traditional lands. We recognize this traditional territory to show respect and understanding to those who walk this land since time immemorial. Today, we uphold our ongoing responsibility to work together in the spirit of the intent for the trees. If all the first peoples and nations that call us place home, the town expresses gratitude for the opportunity to build a better community of these sacred lands for generations to come. With that, we need to call the order and uh any changes or additions to the agenda? Council? Anybody out there? Administration? I think from administration. And I have a motion to uh pass the agenda. Where are we, what are we going? Um councillor.
I think Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that uh committee accepts the uh or probably adopts the agenda as presented for the committee, the whole meeting of September tenth, twenty twenty four.
Please vote for or against. One, two, three, four, five. Right here. Okay, that's uh and councillor race won't be coming today. Are there any citizens uh met with council? Chair? Um now it's great into reports from administration, starting with the municipal internship program.
Thank you, Chair, to the rest of the committee, so. We're presenting the municipal internship program, the due date for this program is October first, so we're bringing it forward. Uh prior to budget for approval. This program is a partnership between municipal organizations and Alberta Municipal Affairs. It allows the opportunity for a municipal intern to work alongside. Uh senior professionals and develop a broad understanding of municipal government and develop the skills. Competencies that they need to be leaders for the next generation in our industry. So this is a grant offered through the Alberta Community Partnership, that's a provincial grant. Uh I would say that the this program is a give and take. It does provide some additional administrative capacity at a significantly reduced rate. It also requires a commitment from specifically management and council to uh make some investments into the development of this individual as well. So the cost of hosting an intern, uh there's a table included. Uh we expect that twenty twenty five, the total cost would be approximately forty eight thousand five hundred. The grant will cover sixty thousand dollars, leaving us in a surplus position of about eleven thousand five hundred for twenty twenty five. Twenty twenty six, uh the costs are a little bit more and that will uh require a total expense of about seventy thousand. Uh with the remaining grants being eleven five, that would require fifty eight thousand nine hundred to be covered uh through general revenue. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Comments or questions, council? For a moment. Go ahead.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair, just to have a question regarding maybe us. The grant, is that grant opportunity potentially available in twenty twenty six and moving forward?
Uh through the chair, members of committee, uh more than likely, and the A C P grant has been a pretty longstanding grant for a few years, so I don't expect it to go away anytime soon.
Yeah, follow up?
Uh huh.
We've had municipal interns for quite some time. Has there ever been a period where that hasn't been covered by a uh grant or where the where the town's covered? Some or all of the costs?
Um not, not to my knowledge, the how much they've dedicated towards the program and the duration that the interns. Uh the duration of the actual term of the interns, those things usually fluctuate with amendments to the program, but. This is the, this is the longest running intern program in Canada, so it has been going on for quite some time.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, just a point of clarification, building off of something councillor O'Satchett said. So then, is it possible, even though the term of the program is eighteen months? Uh that there's potentially additional grant funding that we could apply to the twenty twenty six year if it was made available?
Uh through the chair, to members of committee, there's no stacking opportunities I'm aware of to actually cover that fifty eight thousand. Um but you can't apply for an internship every year and get it when you apply for one, you get one sixty thousand dollar allotment and that's for an eighteen month period.
Okay.
Oh councillor.
And just, I guess, clarifying too, the last uh grant we applied for for this program, we didn't, didn't get it, what is that? Does that remember an intern in the last uh take?
I believe our last application would have been in twenty twenty one.
Um our last applicant would have been Heather Mark.
Uh huh.
Um and we used that A C P grant for municipal energy manager a few years back.
Yeah, so I believe that our last application would have been twenty twenty one with the employees starting in May of twenty twenty two.
Yeah, thank you. Questions or comments or recommended action? Councillor.
Uh yeah, I'm gonna move the committee refers to the report on the municipal internship program to the next regular meeting of council. And if I could speak to it real quickly, um I think this is a great opportunity that our community has uh had success in the past. Uh we've even also got a staff member out of that program as well, as you mentioned. Um so I think this is an opportunity, it also gives an opportunity for, you know, having another staff member uh present and working with all departments, so. Uh I think there's some good for chance for learning, good chance for uh getting, you know, uh our work out of them, obviously. Um and uh potentially possibly uh, you know, uh staff moving forward too, which. Wouldn't need the training if that's the case, because they've already been in the organization, so. Thank you. Mayor Nessie, did you have something?
Uh I'll speak to it. Thank you, and through the chair to committee, I'm gonna speak in support of the motion, I think that uh. Workforce generation and and training is important, I think interns add to an organization on both sides, you've got new blood coming in. But it also forces your managers, your senior leaders to do some training, think about the way things are done. And to sometimes have to explain some things don't always make a lot of sense. Because a new person coming in going, why is it this way? Is a a good question barometer sometimes, so I'm gonna be in favor of this motion and I thank administration for bringing this forward. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, normally, this is a program that I. There's no doubt it's been very beneficial for the uh the town over the long term, we've used it before. I guess the part that's giving me a little hesitancy is the impact on the budget in twenty twenty six. Um so I guess just a further question to uh the C A O, just to make sure I'm understanding it correctly. Um the town will have to uh essentially soak up the cost in the second. Call it the second part of the grant in twenty twenty six, um of fifty eight thousand nine hundred dollars, that's correct.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, uh was that? Was that in any way a planned expense in the long term forecast or uh additional personnel? And I realize it's hard to say because that's a twenty twenty six budget, it's just really what we're talking about is it's getting near half of a percent of generated revenue. If we weren't planning on spending that in the first place, so that's the thing that's causing me hesitation right now.
Uh yeah, through the chair, i- in our three year operational budget, this isn't something that we account for specifically.
Yeah, then just speaking to it, uh Mr. Chair, uh. I'm happy to refer to the next regular meeting of council, that's just a procedural item. I am concerned about the impact of the twenty twenty six budget. Uh and I'll just leave it there for now.
But I feel, I'm of course, I feel. We, 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 this would be subject to uh us approving during the budget anyways, right?
Uh no, through the chair, members of council, this would be uh, I'd be asking council during regular through motion to make a commitment. Uh in order for administration to apply for the grant, because the grant is due October first, so if we were to approve it in council. Uh we would be approving a commitment to provide the necessary funding for the next two years to be a part of the program.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I appreciate councillor McGee's seeking some clarity about the uh twenty twenty six. Uh dollar or budgeted dollar value, that's kind of what I was getting at in my question, I was apologize if I was unclear. Um I was hoping there was an opportunity to reapply in twenty twenty six. And without the potential guarantee of getting the grant. Uh but if there is no opportunity to get the grant to offset the fifty eight thousand nine hundred dollars that would have to come from taxation. I'd have some reservations to uh. I I understand that the municipal internship program is a valuable thing and it uh. And it gives new graduates an opportunity to get some real world experience, however. Investing sixty thousand dollars in taxpayer dollars. Into an intern whom there is no guarantee that they would stay with the town of Hinton, that we would. Train them so that they can move on to work in another municipality, not certain is the best use of municipal tax dollars. Um I'm happy to wait and see what happens with this at regular too, but I'm not sure I'll support it, thank you.
Um right, let me get off, please. Okay, um I'd say that I, I kind of, I kind, I kind of um have reservations about approving. One off stuff that isn't essential to core business outside of the budget cycle. That always makes me nervous, I'll move this on personally to the regular meeting of council, but going beyond their outside of like the budget for something that uh isn't essential to our operations. That could have been discussed during the budget process. Um might be something I approve either. Thanks, oh uh please vote yes or no, I did accidentally already. Just just because of that, they've touched. Right, that's uh all in favor. Now we can move on to anybody else like to make a comment or question? Okay, move on for to Parks Recreation Culture Fees, please. Thank you. And I will turn this over to Ms. Wade.
Thank you, C A O, good afternoon, council. The Parks Recreation and Culture Fees are current through to the end of twenty twenty four. And must be set in preparation for budget creation and approval. Um the report before you has two main purposes. Um evaluate the three options for recreation and culture fees, recommendation A, recommendation B, or the status quo, so the same fees as twenty twenty four. Advise administration of any bolded fee type options committee may wish to explore further to understand the impacts. Of potentially including such fee types within the schedule. The fee options before you today are based on or derived from the following. Number one, a continuation of council's past practice of downloading fees to the user to offset taxation for recreation services. Number two, municipal comparator analysis where the following was considered, fee type and the associated amount. Amenities offered, so for example, do they have one sheet of ice or two, do they have a gymnasium or fitness facility, do they have water slides? Membership types and inclusion, so the number of facility entries that a person may gain by having a membership. As part of their annual pass or reduce program registration rates, for example. And offered programming within those facilities. We also considered regional comparators, specifically Edson, Jasper and Brad Cash or the MD Greenview. Where uh those were also considered and weighed more heavily as we're in direct competition with these rec facilities. Therefore, the proposed rates need to be proportional considering the amenities offered with within recreation across the region. Admin noted Edson as an outlier, as they no longer aim to recoup programming costs at the user level. And such such costs have been transferred from the recreation user to general taxation. Giving the appear appearance of lower cost for service, but certainly reducing the barrier to access. Ultimately, these fees need to remain palatable so that patrons choose Hinton's facilities as opposed to driving elsewhere within the region to recreate. Number four, increasing operating costs, so things like increased cost for chemicals or ice paint, the shale that we talked about in previous meetings. With all that said, the recommended recommended action for this report is that committee recommend council approve recreation fee recommendation A. Which is expected to yield approximately a hundred thirty eight thousand five hundred dollars in revenues. Used to offset operating cost increases and general taxation increases. I can take questions at this time.
Comments and questions, council, please? Councillor McGee?
Yeah, I guess uh building off the recommendation uh and then going back to. A meeting we had several weeks ago about potential uh service levels with uh the recreator center. Um has admin done any? I guess forgive the phrase, cross pollination of those two potentials, like council had indicated, there might be some areas where we'd be interested in looking at. Uh expanding service levels or exploring service levels. Uh is there any connection between the two potentially with the recommended action and that?
Thank you for the question, councillor McGee, and these uh fees on the research began in Q four of twenty twenty three. Uh so no, there is no connection at this time, any additional programming that we intend to offer as related to our level of service will come forward. During budget process separate from the fees.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead, please.
Uh outside, and this is, I guess, would go to everyone in administration, outside of the fact that this would simply generate more revenue, which would then allow for. For the resources to be utilized by uh council as a whole, correct?
Uh through the chair, that's correct, and really what, you know, increasing the fees is just going to tip the scales a little bit more from tax. Funding or tax supported to rights supported.
Okay, perfect, thanks, I'm good, Mr. Chair.
My, my concern is that today, I get asked to increase these fees, and then tomorrow I get to go to a public meeting where we're gonna increase uh. Utility fees dramatically. So unless I can understand uh more about the cost, uh costs related to running these departments. Um related to these fee increases. That's what would help me uh approve one of the increases, so how much have the costs gone up and what are the reasons for some of those cost increases? I do thank you very much for the detailed information on the comparative analysis, so I looked at uh. Certain parts of that, I got to see how things were, so that's part of it, but uh the other, the other almost bigger part for me is the cost increases. Be able to explain that to the taxpayer.
Absolutely, thank you for the question, councillor Taylor. An easy example for you would be a a constant cost that seems to be increasing in just last year, twenty three over twenty four. The pool chemicals increased by fifty percent. Um we spend well over seventy thousand dollars on pool chemicals annually. So that's an example of one of our um material costs that are increasing quite rapidly. And that's part of the reason for increasing these fees.
Sure, but the. Parks Recreation and Culture uh budget overall, what's that increase expected to be in the next year?
Specific to the fees?
Specific to the departments that you're asking for the fee increases.
So this referring specific to the fee increase and the revenue that is anticipated to be generated from that? I can't speak to what the overall increase for recreation will be at this time, as we've just started uh developing our budgets, however. This will account for for just less than fifty percent of just the staffing increases. So union wages, for example, their their increase that is due to them through the C B A this year. This a hundred and thirty eight thousand covers approximately thirty five to forty percent of those increases.
I am. I want to belabor this, but I understand that you can't project forward because we're not into the budget season, but what did these department's increases, just to give. You a rough idea how reasonable these increases are, what was it in the last year?
I have to go to Ms. Lebo for the overall increase to our budget line, but of course, that included C P Ps and O V Cs that were. Uh provided straight staffing wise, I know we're projecting a two percent to this year.
Because one, you're asking for a twelve percent increase without supporting cost information, I have trouble with that, that's all.
Yeah, that's a twelve percent increase to the base rate only, if you go further down into the report, I believe it's a four point. Or let me pull it up for you, page. Yeah, so if you look under the analysis section, page six. The twelve point five percent that you see there, that's related to the base increase only. Whereas if you scroll a little bit further down. Into the implications of decision section, you'll see that the twelve. Percent on the base rate actually equates to a four point four uh percent overall increase to parks and recreation budget.
Okay, that's how much it raises.
Uh huh.
And the lower increase rate is point zero point two percent, two two seven, okay, thank you. That's good, thanks. Uh councillor.
Thanks to the, to the chair, this was a massive amount of information. And it was like, it was a lot, a lot to read and a lot to try to figure out, and I think um. Understanding, I appreciate the 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 depth that you went into of the information to try to sort it all out, um. I do understand that we have to raise things a certain amount, but I certainly appreciate. How you, the lens that you took um in. Uh recommendation A, um I was happy to see the inclusion of the the H P D. Rate, um because I think that. The demographic that would be adversely affected by. The extra amount of money would very, would quite potentially be able to be then helped through those other programs. And I think that's an intelligent way to to do things, because you're you're targeting. You're you're helping the groups that that really require it while you're still being fiscally accountable to what the realities are of. What it's costing to do business, so I really like that option. Um the reality is most low income families are not ever going to be able to afford to buy an annual pass to get the discount. To buy the punch card, to get the discount, to do those things, so having that rate and then whatever that looks like specifically and um. How you define it and all those other things is a whole other volume maybe that, but I. I really appreciate that fact in itself, because I I think that, again, a lot of the people that would struggle with this. Could be, could be quite, um. Yeah, helped by how you're breaking out some of the definitions and some of the the rate changes, so I I did like that, I did have one question on it, am I, so. If it was a person on age. And their children. Would you be, would there be a rate for like the, like that whole family unit? Or would it just be for the person on on age specifically, because that that's some of the people that've reached out to me specifically, you know, they're on age raising these. Families, so if if their kids are going, would the kids then naturally have have that as well, would it be looked at as that family unit, as that's the main primary source of income? Not the individual on age?
Excellent question, thank you. Typically, when someone approaches the counter at the recreation center, we go through the various fee options that are available to them, what may best fit for their family. Um so I think that would be evaluated on a, on a case by case basis. Um but if that were the will of council to have that expressly, a hundred percent of the time, if. One individual on age comes in, it covers their whole family, no matter what, if that's the will of council. We can certainly take that motion and and bring that back in the next iteration.
Yeah, I think that's respectful, I I think that that would be. The definition of how we are going to. Again, looking at the lens of all the other things that we have coming at the community right now for cost wise, how we can manage some of those things in these. You know, specific situations of whether it's low income seniors, low income families. It, what is the definition of a low income family, how to improve that, I think that would be important for me to be able to support. More of a a higher increase, um understanding that there is a mechanism to support some of the the low income groups, so.
Councillor McGee?
Yeah, and I I think, and you know, if I've misinterpreted councillor chambers, please feel free to correct me. I think I'm of the same mind, for myself, it's a bit of a chicken and an egg. Um if I know that there's a program in place to protect those low income individuals across the community. To ensure that they have access to to recreation. Uh it gives me more latitude to explore uh recouping costs with those who don't fall into a low income category. So I guess the the question I'm coming around to is, what's our line? Do we have enough time this budgetary season uh to explore what that low income program might look like to get it in place? Um prior to setting those fees, or are we locked into a time? To a timeframe that's, no, you know what, really, we don't have the time to do that this budget cycle. That might be something going into next year that council could explore, um. I guess really that's my question, because that'll impact how I I'm forward with this.
Thank you, councillor McGee. There, the reason we extended the fees a few weeks ago through to December. Was so that we can use this time in the fall to have these types of eventual conversations, so absolutely, there is some time, however, we. You know, I can leave that line last to do in our budget prep, but end of October is. Kind of the length of time we have.
Yeah. I'd just like to reiterate that uh trying to recoup costs with twenty ten twelve percent uh fee increases. Uh when we're also trying to increase utility fees so high, seems uh uh too, seems too, seems uh seems too high, we're trying to do too much with too many fees. Unless there's solid cost information just by uh certain increases. Is there a motion or or anybody want to recommend that action? Council? Councillor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Without speaking for everyone on council, just for myself. I always struggle with these decisions a little bit, because. It's hard to get that. Balance right between how much revenue is collected through user fees and how much revenue is collected through general taxation, we understand. A certain amount of money needs to be collected through revenue in some way to be able to operate the rec center. But that's the challenge I've got, do we try and make it more of a user pay system? Try and get it so that the people who are using the facility are the ones who are helping to pay the most for it? Or is that a responsibility that falls on the general taxpayer? I guess my question to administration then is, in terms of option A or option B. Which one of those more? Directly aligns with best practice and with practices that are implemented in other communities? In terms of the ratio between user pay and taxpayer pay?
Thank you for the question. Option A most aligns. With what we're seeing in other municipalities and the vast spreadsheet that was shared, I think demonstrates that it is a wide, a wide range, but typically it is. Downloaded to as much as possible um to the consumer.
Thank you, if I could follow up then, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
So I'm, I'm fine with that, provided that there is. Something in place to make sure that the vulnerable people in our community still have access to the recreation facility and can use it. Affordably, based on what their their income levels are, I want to make, I I want to make sure that we're not. Eliminating anybody from being able to use the facility because they can't afford to. I I guess I'm falling kind of. Somewhere in line with what councillor McGee was saying about taking a a look at. At subsidization or special programs or I'm I'm not, I'm not sure how that's manageable without having. You know, eight hundred different A levels and. Uh it it's a tough thing to manage and I'm not sure how to move forward, but that is my concern, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh councillor Chambers?
Yeah, I I think one thing, I mean, for me. Whether we pick A or B, I think I want to see this line for, I think that that line needs to go in no matter what we're picking. Um I think it's been brought up a lot by the community and and it's just the the responsible thing to do, no matter what option that is. And I do think that there probably is some solutions. You know, maybe they're not perfect in the beginning, but you know. You have cards that F C S S hands out to people that they're working with, or you know, different groups in town that are aware of income levels of people that can say this is your. Card signed by so and so that would validate this until a program could be into place, I I think that there's there's way you could do that, but I I think no matter what option we choose. We need to be looking at the sector of people and and um their ability to pay for recreation even as it sits now, so um. If I may, I would, I would make the recommended action that committee directs administration to bring the parks. Recreation and culture user fees, recommendation A to a future regular meeting of council, where option is the master of the church is by one. And then just if I may, I think that we need to adjust what that percentage looks like, we still have that obviously the ability within council chambers to look at that, but. I, I'd make that option.
Okay, good. Any comments or questions? Councillor McGee?
Yeah, I think for myself, I I can't support it at this time, simply because I don't have. I don't have any guarantee that we'll be able to bring a policy that protects a a large number of uh at risk users. Um with those sorts of increases. Um I realize it's it's really tricky, uh like councillor O'Satchett said, trying to find that that balance, it's tough. Um and it's, it's one of those ones where I really do feel guilty when we receive the report, because you know, in council's mind, you look at A, you look at B. And and it's only true for me, in my head, I sort of see them as kind of polar opposites, right, it's like ones like this. Really a high increase and one is really much, uh, very much a status quo. You know, is the right answer splitting the difference in the meantime and, and exploring out a, a bit of a policy for those people who are at risk? I don't know, but for myself, I just feel that A, right now, without a lack of other information on the table, I just can't support it. I'm not saying I couldn't support it later if we had good policy to protect other users. All right, but I can only, uh, I can only go with the information I have in my brain only. Uh, thanks, Mr. Chair.
Uh, councillor O'Satchett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'm happy to support it moving forward today. I think administrations hurt concerns of council and making sure that. That those who, who most need assistance to be able to access our recreation facilities are, are provided that assistance in some way. I, I have confidence that administration will bring back something that's manageable and workable and fair for everyone. So I, I'm fine moving it forward today. Thank you.
Um. Mayor Nissen.
Thank you. Through the chair of administration, uh, with the motion on the floor, uh, option A lists off the persons on assured income. So the age and the P D D. Uh, line items as well as the student rates. Um. Just checking in the report, you've got those listed off as possibilities. If we pass this motion or the. Uh, or this consensus, I suppose, are the age and P D D and student rates going to be assumed to be brought forward to council? Or do we need a second motion to make sure those come forward?
Thank you for the question, Mayor Nissen. Age and other similar reduced rates have not been contemplated and were not included in our previous iterations. It's a gap that had been noticed and we were aware of, which is why they, that those two portions will come forward in either iteration. A, uh, A or B. So yes, it is our intent to bring that forward, but I will supplement with additional information um on exactly. How that program might be managed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. Well, the council.
I have a question then with the bolded ones, the super seniors, the low income program and the. Um, and the corporate discounts and all that, uh, what it looks like is that would require a separate motion. Um, to be made if council would like to see any of those also brought for discussion as well. Is that correct?
Thank you, councillor Ross. Uh, that had been the intent, right? It's, it's, if we're bolded one, that you wanted to explore more. I would take the motion, but I think it's, it's clear from the conversation that more information is required specific to age, specific to students. And other low income areas that we can, with or without a motion. I intend to bring additional information forward in the next phase.
Thank you.
We can speak to it.
Sure, please.
Um, I'm going to be in favor of this, um, you know, and, and it is a very difficult conversation. I agree because there are. A number of people in our communities that may not use these services, but they are expected to also rate, pay, pay for rates to pay. For. So there's a, that balance, you know, uh, of trying to. You know, have those user fees so that it's not as much on the taxpayer. So I think that with this conversation and administration hearing that. I'm, I'm confident that we can come back and, and uh. Come up with what is most reasonable and provide still the services without uh, uh, that much or. The majority of it on our tax rate payers as well, the rest of the community. So I'll be interested. Interested to see what comes forward. Uh, and I'm interested in these other. Programs as well. So I'm happy to hear that we're adding in super seniors, low program, low income. And also, you know, the corporate rates and things like that, especially because other, other surrounding uh specifically Edson is doing that. And I think it's important that we are looking at that because we can see an increase in uh revenue with those services. So, thank you.
Um. Yeah, I don't support the increase. I support, I would support recommendation B. Anyways, anybody else?
Uh, Chair, if I could, um. Council, just listening to some of the conversation, there's some, maybe some struggle with finding the context of those numbers, but. Would recuperation rates and comparison of recuperation rates be helpful for council? To pinpoint, uh, you know, what percentage of the budget is being recuperated by rates versus general taxation?
Um. Uh, you go ahead. I have a comment. Again, through the chair to administration, I, that sounds like a very useful thing. I've seen some nods around the room. Uh, the other piece of information I think council. Most likely to be interested in is uh, how much would this increase? Fit the, the budget increase required for the recreation center? In this year, and I know that's coming and this is coming later to council, when this comes back to council, knowing what that budget gap. Potentially is. Would help us as well. Thank you. And in particular, that question was asked by councillor O'Satchett and he did get an answer. And he said that the recuperation rates for other communities were greater than our recuperation rates. So to see that, that. Statement supported with numbers would be uh super. The council.
Yeah, and I think something the community is always looking forward to is if our fees are going up. What are they paying for? It, what is it, you know, that is, is, what's? The reason for it? And as you stated, as one, which is interesting, the chemicals themselves to keep the pool going has gone up fifty percent. You know, over just a year. Uh, so I think those are valuable uh bits of financial information, not only for us, but also the community. To understand, you know, why those costs are going up and why those fees are going up. It's not just going into revenue. It's, it's. Because the costs of other things are going up that we're all seeing, you know? And I agree with the rest of council and I, I too would like to see that. Uh, because I mean, even our current rate that we're speaking of at our top and all. When they found out we're actually paying, still paying less than other communities made that stain a little bit lesser. You know, so I think those are really important factors moving forward with this. So, thank you.
Heather, did you have a comment?
Oh, I just wanted to share that. Though we can access the recuperation rates, the challenge with that, like I alluded to in the report, was the context surrounding that with respect to what they offer in their facility and. Kind of building in uh like a contingency for that, um, being competitive within the region, but I'll, I'll put that lens on it when it gets presented back.
Um, just, just a backup, uh, councillor pause. To me, what's easily justified to the uh community is uh costs potentially going to increase by this much and, you know, we could add on maybe inflation or something. So that's what we can. Do for an increase. Okay. So that's how we came up with the increase, something like that. It's really easy to explain. So that would help me. Anyways, um, any more comments or questions? Okay, that uh. Let's go with the uh vote on uh or consensus on committee direct administration to bring parks, recreation, social user fees. Recommendation A to a future regular medium council for adoption as part of the master P change, master P insurance by law. These both were against. Thank you. Okay. That passes forward to me. Any other comments or questions on that? No. Okay, that's, uh, basically move on to the actual gap two thousand and five franchise discussion. Thank you.
Uh, it's the committee's uh. Approval, I'd like to talk in general terms about franchise fees and then return to the agenda and deal with four point three and four point four individually if. Uh, that's agreeable to committee. So annually, we have an opportunity to bring franchise fees forward to council for. Their either increase or decrease on those rates. Um, couple of questions have come up as why electricity and gas and not some of the other. Uh, utilities that we also have such as telecommunications or cable. Um. Couple of things is the legislation around through the M G A. That um specifically deals with the Alberta Utilities Commission. So those are the ones. Under the umbrella of or sort of gas and electricity are those under the umbrella of the Alberta Utilities Commission. And our telecommunication or cables, those are under a federal lens. So. We're dealing with uh franchise fees for our gas and for our electricity. Um. Some history and looking at the why, because it's something I've always just accepted that we have to do is that the. Gas and electric have a more physical presence in the communities. They're looking for physically being in the right ways, whereas some telecommunications are not necessarily having that big infrastructure. Um, so just a little context there. I don't know that I know a hundred percent of all why. The Alberta Utility Commission is only for those. Um, but that's what I bring forward for you today is the. Atco gas and the Florida electric. We have. Uh, negotiated agreements with the town of Hinton. Um, so the utility companies need to install, maintain and operate their infrastructure. Power lines, transformers, gas lines on municipal land. And some of these are also under our roadways and sidewalks. So the franchise fee negotiated. With the town of Hinton allows the utility companies access to this land. So the franchise fee compensates municipality for the use of this public space and some of the disruption caused by the utility network. Often the franchise agreement between the utility company and the municipality. Grants the utility company exclusive rights to provide utility services, which is often necessary. For efficient service provision, given the expense of getting the infrastructure installed in the community. Franchise fees are calculated as a percentage of the utility's gross revenue within the municipality. For example, the forecasted revenue for atco franchise fee is just over four hundred thousand dollars and that's based on an estimated. Revenue tariff of three point three million dollars. Alternatively, for the selector, the forecasted revenue for the town of Hinton is one point four million dollars. And this is based on estimated distribution and transmission revenues of twelve point two million dollars. So the difference in the amount of the franchise revenue between utility companies is largely due to value and volume. The volume of electricity consumed by households and businesses can differ significantly from the volume of that of natural gas. Franchise fees are also a revenue source that come to the municipality from properties who are exempt from paying property taxes. Such as schools, hospitals and churches. And with that overview, the first item before you, four point three is the atco gas. Twenty twenty five franchise fee. Uh, currently the rate is at twelve percent. Which is estimated to bring in revenue to the town of Hinton of four hundred and five thousand dollars. And the average annual be paid by the residential, average residential customer would be seventy seven dollars and fifteen cents. Changing this fee uh by one percentage up or down. Increases or decreases revenue to the town of Hinton by thirty three thousand dollars and. Equates to a change of approximately six dollars and fifty cents annually per resident. And with that, I leave for questions.
Want to answer questions? Counselor McGee.
Yeah, my question is involving the anticipated delivery revenue in twenty twenty four. Comparatively, it's uh currently projected at three point two million. Uh, but if we look back at twenty three and twenty two. It's essentially been an increase from three point four to three point five. Um, is there a reason why it's projected to be lower than the past couple of years?
I'm, I'm sorry to qualify. You're, you're suggesting in twenty twenty four?
Yeah, it says the, so on the first page of the report.
Yeah.
I'm just curious about three point two million projected under twenty twenty four.
So that is the um. The tariff revenue that's provided to us from the utility company. I do not have a qualifier on why they're projecting that to go down.
Okay. Thanks.
Counselor O'Satchett.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. A question for administration and to. What would be the approximate rate for twenty twenty five? To collect the same amount of revenue adjusted for inflation?
I do not have that calculation, but I could certainly bring it forward. I dealt with only one percent up and downs. It's for ease of discussion and calculation. But I could certainly bring that forward.
If you can follow up.
Sure, please.
Uh, the reason I ask, it's just, it's hard to just. Throw a number on the table without anything to. Base it on or any way to justify it. And I could. Come up with a rough calculation to, I guess, of. By looking up the rate of inflation, but. I don't know. For, for me, it, it seems a little bit up. Yeah, if I can just can leave it that. I'm, I'm okay for this, your chair. Thank you.
Um. My take on this is that uh franchise fees isn't the, is an obscure uh form of taxation and poorly understood one. That's not a really great way to uh collect money. Better if it's collected on property taxes. Uh, that's if we want to be transparent. So uh, I am supportive of what Albert would say, councillor O'Satchett would say. I wouldn't support anything that would actually increase the dollar amount going forward. I would support um whatever the rate would be to keep the dollar amount roughly equal. Is this as a. This, this, if we go with uh twelve percent, that looks like it increases from three seventy one to four oh five. So. Whatever, whatever would do that, that's good. I can stand and that would apply to both the electrical and the natural gas. So that's what I think. I would support a rate that supports a revenue neutral approach to both franchise fees for the reasons that I said. The position has changed in seventy years. I'm so changed.
Um, thank you through the chair. I, I agree. Something that would keep us in a similar revenue position seems to be. Um, smart, I certainly don't support increasing it. Uh, you know, from a, just a percentage based thing, but if we could look at it from how do we, how do we stay revenue neutralized, so I would support something like that as well.
Counselor Sessions.
Mr. Chair, so I, I guess assuming that the rates that the uh. That the utility company are charging are kind of matching inflation, I guess. Keeping it at twelve percent. It, it does equate to additional revenue, but it should be more or less tied to increase in the cost of. The utilities being provided. So I guess, I guess it is, it's proportional. Um. That said, keeping in mind until twenty twenty three. Now, the rate that was, that was seven is fourteen point six and was dropped by two point six percent. At that time. Uh, I'm not sure that dropping the percentage rate is a responsible decision either. I, I get what some of the other councillors are saying. There is still. A certain amount of revenue that we need to collect either through. Through this or taxation or user fees or, or whatever. Reducing this just means we have to collect more through taxation. One of the reasons that I've brought up before why I. Support. Uh, franchise fees is they are somewhat user based. They're, they're based on. You know, the, the base rate, but then there's also a, a usage rate. I'm not sure gas and electric are both exactly the same way. And all that's how electric is. So the bigger users of the utility wind up paying more of the, uh. Of the uh franchise fee than the individual homeowner. Uh, doing a little bit of research before if you. Clicked it over to collect the same amount of revenue tax through taxation. Individual homeowners would actually contribute a higher percentage than they do through the franchise fee system. So that's why, that's why I kind of support it, kind of understand it. Um. I'm okay with keeping it at twelve. I wouldn't want to lower it to generate the same amount of revenue though. Thanks.
Oh, I can solve it.
Yeah, I, I guess my, my other question on that is if we don't lower it, because I know if we kept it at twelve percent, it's seventy seven. Fifteen annual fee per resident. What was it thi- this year? What was that for, that cost for this year?
Uh, through to all of committee, the cost this year was seventy dollars and twenty five cents.
Seventy dollars and twenty five cents. So keeping it at, at the twelve percent is uh an extra seven dollars than as opposed to what last year was. Okay. And I think that, uh, you know, I, I, I. I agree. I, I, I don't think lowering it is the right thing to do because of the inflation. I think. Increasing it uh isn't the right thing to do. I think keeping it at the twelve percent. Um, it, it puts it up, yes, seven dollars per resident. Uh, but I think that does take into account. I, I mean, I don't know the math, but you know, it sounds reasonable that the inflation and everything that that would. You know, make sense. Um, and we're not increasing it. So I'm of the mind keeping it at, at its current rate. Uh, personally and uh, you know, and, and then we're still at least recouping some costs. So, thank you.
Counselor McGee.
What is the? May seem like a very fine detail. What is the actual revenue received by the town of Hinton? And then Mr. Chair might have a follow up.
Uh, through to all of committee. Uh, through to all of committee, we receive monthly uh payments from both utility companies right now.
And it's a, it's to clarify then, but it's still a projection, right? We, we can't know for sure month over month and really year over year, I mean, it indicates here that it's a projection. We, we don't know for sure what the year end final total is going to be. You know what I mean, if we're receiving those revenues monthly, correct?
Yeah, uh, through to all of committee, that is correct, although the payments we receive monthly are not static, they do vary based on revenue and actual amounts.
Yeah, so then, Mr. Chair, I guess to speak to it, given that information, I'm, I'm actually. If we were to receive one final disbursement at the end of the year. That said, yeah, absolutely, based on this percentile, this is how much money you'll receive and it's to the penny. I could, I would very much be in favor of saying, yeah, we won't collect any more than X amount of dollars. Uh, given a certain situation, but I don't think we can actually know that. Given the fact that this is varies month over month. So for myself, I'm, I would certainly be in favor of leaving it at twelve percent, certainly not in favor of increasing it. This has been a road that I've been down, you know, multiple times, multiple times, and certainly not in favor of decreasing it. Uh, at this point, I would just leave it well enough alone and move on, I think that's sort of where I'm coming in at, thank you.
Counselor Ross.
Yeah, and that's, I, I appreciate that question, I was uh, um, thinking about as you were asking, maybe in the future. Having what was projected in twenty twenty three, what was actually taken in? Would maybe help a little bit to understand that as well in the future, because we get the year to date now, but as, as Counselor Magoon had said, we don't know what the. At the end of the day, what the final dollar is, so um, yeah, that would be, I think, helpful, because then we can see, are we getting more? Or we getting less, and then we'll make a, a little bit better, easier decision or not as stable decision, so. But I, I, for me, I'm, I'm in favor of the twelve percent moving forward, so, thank you.
Counselor Stash.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, so, yeah, following up on that, I, I believe. If I'm remembering correctly, that was the reason that the rate was reduced in twenty twenty three is because utility rates. Took such a dramatic spike up that the percentage we were collecting through the franchise fees. Jumped a huge amount, and you can see that on the annual fee average residential customer. It went from eighty two dollars a month to ninety six dollars, or sorry, per year, which is, that's a significant jump. And I think that's why, if I remember correctly, council at the time made the decision to drop it down to twelve percent to get it back so that the revenue is. Kind of back aligned to what it was before. Um, that said, I do want to confirm one thing, I'm quite certain that I, I understand the annual fee. Average, that is the actual annual fee rate, it's seventy, currently seventy dollars and twenty five cents per year. That the average residential customers paying.
Uh, through our committee, that is correct.
Okay, so if I could follow up?
Hmm.
So, having a change that, that goes from seventy dollars and twenty five cents to seventy seven dollars and fifteen cents. It, it comes out to fifty five cents a month, I believe, something like that, and I don't think that that's unreasonable when you look at. Inflation and, and all the other costs of, costs of living that have gone up over the, the past years, so that, that even makes me more. Comfortable in keeping it at twelve percent as we move forward, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Who is next? Counselor, move on.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to take the recommended action, that council request administration to bring the Atco Gas twenty twenty five franchise fee. Uh, with a rate of twelve percent uh to a future meeting of council, I didn't include the word change because it indicates status quo. Uh, and it's been spoken to, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Chivers.
Uh, through the chair, I just have one question just to them here. What is, does this money just go into general revenue, or is it put into a resource for a specific purpose with regards to? Utility, something or others, or right away maintenance or, or things like that, or is it just a general revenue line item for the municipality?
Through uh, to our committee, it is just a general revenue line, but it is taken into consideration uh definitely in. Balancing out with the rates of taxation increases.
Uh. I don't support this, this is a ten percent year over year increase, if you look at the projected numbers, which I think is a number that we have to look at. And uh, just because it's small, doesn't mean it's not important, because we just talked about another increase that was going to be up to twelve percent, so all these increases amount to the full diamond that I'm here. And that I'm concerned about. Um, Counsel, uh, Mary Nissen.
Thank you, and committee, I'll be in support of this motion, I think franchise fees are a, a fair and transparent way to tax. The use of our distribution systems from our regulated industries uh and utilities. The reality is that not every person that has a, a gas bill or an electrical bill pays property taxes. So by taking franchise fees away, you're just putting that cost onto a taxpayer, which is a smaller group of people than the number of people that have these utility counts in them. Uh, so I fully support this motion, I think leaving it as status quo is a fair and reasonable decision, thank you.
Counselor, move on.
Yeah, just see, uh, I'd actually seek clarification on your last statement, Counselor Taylor, because if I look back to twenty eighteen. Uh, the average fee for the residential customer was seventy two thirty eight. The anticipated impact with a twelve percent rate for this year would be seventy seven fifteen. So going back, uh, this is sort of for me, middle of the road, seventy seven dollars. Uh, it's in between the lowest rate uh in the past two years of seventy dollars and twenty five cents versus the highest rate of ninety six forty five in twenty twenty uh two. So I, I, I'm sorry, can you clarify the highest in ten years for me? I think that's what I heard you say.
I can say that second thing. I said it would be a, a ten percent increase.
Okay.
I got the ten percent increase by seventy to seventy seven.
Then, then I misheard and I apologize.
I could have said it by mistake.
I just wanted to make sure I was hearing the right thing.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, let's look for against uh, that committee requests administration to bring back Atco. Gas two thousand twenty five franchise fee, the rate of twelve percent to a future council meeting of council, or against please. That's uh, five in favor and one against um, the recommended action. Any more comments or questions? Hey, let's move on to Portis Alberta Electric's franchise fee.
Uh, through to all of committees, so the same premise applies for the electrical, we do generate significantly more revenue. Uh, for the town of Hinton through the electrical franchise agreement, but that is definitely because the volumes that they are calculating our revenues on are significantly higher, almost. Four times as high as what the Atco gas is, and just a reminder that um. These fees come to us uh from properties that are exempt and paying property tax.
Comments or questions?
I, I realize that it may, based on the, the response from the previous action item, probably can't answer this. But I think it's worth echoing out loud, and, and maybe if somebody else is catching something I'm missing, please help me out. I, I don't understand how, looking at the table, year over year from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty four. Uh, we have the company's delivery revenue of two point seven million, three point four million, three point five million to twenty twenty three. And that they're projecting a delivery revenue of three point two million in twenty twenty four. That to me seems really out of, out of line with what the impact has been to citizens and what they've been paying for utility rates, I just. I can't fathom that, uh, I don't understand it. Um, and yet they're paying more in twenty twenty four uh for the annual fee. Uh, than they have on the data that's given, so it's just, it's strange to me, I have a hard time understanding it, if somebody has a clarification, I really would be happy to hear.
Administration?
Uh, through to all of committee, um, perhaps CEO Natsik has information. Uh, but I see where I did not follow up on uh information that was received from the utility company, that I did not question that. Um, but I certainly can look into it and follow up with the stakeholder engagement teams at them, at both of them and find out. If it's related to uh projected decreases in costs or anything along those lines, and I'd have, be happy to bring that back to uh committee or council.
Counselor Stash.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, related to that. Uh, the rate hasn't changed, twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four, it's still eleven point seven three both, but projected annual revenue is up. Not quite a hundred thousand dollars based on three hundred thousand dollar reduction in company delivery revenue. So if possible, if we could get some clarification on that as well.
Hmm, Ernesto.
Thank you, and through the chair to administration, uh, just specifically talk about that company, company delivery revenue line in our report. Uh, I suspect that that line, all of those values are erroneous, and you mentioned, I believe, in your initial report about franchise fees, that the. Company revenue for our electrical franchise was twelve point two million, was that correct?
On the um, distribution and transmission, yes, they're from the projections. Um, I would like to uh, probably refer this to CEO Kinatic, but I believe further investigation into that line. Um, because I took that from their letters sent to us, but I will investigate it further.
Through the chair to the rest of the committee, so franchise fees are not, are not calculated off of the revenue that the company is actually bringing in. It's based off of the uh, the total distribution, the total distribution charges. But that doesn't include the price of the commodity, so depending on, I guess, the price of the commodity, and that's just meant to stabilize those prices, so. I'm, I'm sure it's something within the, the volumes they're producing versus how much they're going to be uh charging specifically for the commodity, I'm not sure, but.
Counselor Stash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I had a question, it's like, it's related to something that's been said twice in it, and it's not something I ever considered. Uh, that there are utility users in the community who are property tax exempt, and, and that's not something I, I have to admit, I've never actually thought about that. Who are some of the entities that might be utility users that don't pay, that don't contribute revenue through property taxation?
Uh, through the committee, so your hospitals, your schools, uh, Evergreen's foundation would be another one. Uh, so properties that go through that are exempt, um, and that is. Called exempt, not by the municipality, but through the assessment center.
I can follow up, Mr. Chair. Yeah, that's not something I ever considered, but that is a really great point, so if you don't. Collect it from those entities, which are essentially other levels of government, then you're passing that burden on to our taxpayers in our community. And I don't think that that's, that's fair, that those institutions yet to pay, you know, you know, a lesser share. Of the ride, and we pass on that to our citizens who are then subsidizing the, the provincial institutions, I think that, yeah. Uh, that's not something I consider, that's a great point, that makes it even more. Uh, concrete for me that, that I would be against reducing the franchise fees. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Counselor Ross.
Yeah, and I don't know if this has anything to do with it, but I see in twenty twenty one the two point seven million, but. My, my wonder is, is with, with the CEO talking about the commodity and the price, that was after COVID. And everything went up, that skyrocketed uh after COVID, and I'm just wondering if now we're just getting back to what is a normal projection. Uh, versus the aftermath of COVID and recouping the cost and things, so I'm just throwing it out there, but I'm just looking at the years and what occurred. Uh, that could impact the, that, that number significantly, because I mean, going from two point seven to three point four million, that's. That's a big increase that, that's the only thing I personally that I can think that, that may cause that, so.
Comments, questions or recommended action? Who put their hand up for?
Uh, I'll take the recommended, well, I'll, I'll take the recommended action without a change. So, similar to the last direction, that committee request administration to bring the Portis Alberta twenty twenty five franchise fee. Uh, with a rate of eleven point seven three percent uh to a future meeting of council. And really just speaking to things, it's funny, in the whole time that we've explored this issue, it's really, I think it's been. Just about every year I've been on council. Um, that is absolutely not an angle of discussion that has ever been explored, hey, so. Yeah, it's interesting to see that that actually is a user fee based approach. Um, that I never, never thought about before, it gave me something new to chew on, just to make this issue that much more complex. Next.
Well, my comment would be the same as before, and uh, I won't vote for anything that doesn't make it revenue neutral from one year to the next. Again, because I see it as an obscure uh form of taxation that's poorly understood. And not as well understood by property taxes, and I don't just derive that comment from my own uh. Feeling, I derive that from seven years of extensive discussions with taxpayers and their understanding of this versus property taxes. And that's what I get from them for those dozens and dozens of conversations I've had, thanks. Uh, Counselor Stash.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, just before it gets called a question. Um, there was a request for some additional information about how the numbers were derived and the company delivery revenue. Will that come to council before this uh comes for decision at a council meeting? Or when it comes for decision?
Uh, through the, the, to all of committee, I would be insured to include it um. When it comes to, if it comes to the following council meeting, if that's quick enough, we do have some timelines, we need to be advising utility companies by mid October. So with committee's uh approval, I'd like to include it with, and then at least before you, and if we have to delay it. Uh, at least we can anticipate and, and give maybe a heads up to the utility providers that something will be coming.
Good, can I follow up?
Hmm.
I know we've moved past it already, but I just noticed that the same anomaly uh is there for the uh. Atco gas franchise fee too, that the annual revenue is increased in twenty twenty four over twenty twenty three, but their projected delivery revenue is lower. So if we can include that when it comes for decision too, that'd be great.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Um, did anybody else have Thomas a question? If that will move to the vote, that uh, we request administration to bring the Portis two thousand twenty four franchise fee, rate of eleven. Point seven three percent to future council meeting, please vote for or against. Same as before, no surprise. Okay, that will move on to any comments or questions? Okay, go on to uh reporting, council reports. Um, let's start with uh, Mary Nissen.
Thank you, through the chair to committee, uh, today I attended the truth and reconciliation. Uh, presentation for the town of Hinton staff and council with Holly Forte at the path. Uh, last Thursday, I attended a community futures board meeting. Uh, community futures has been working hard to support businesses affected by the situation in Jasper. Uh, last Wednesday, we had the FCSS registration and info fair down at the Hinton Center, and it looked like it had a great turnout. A reminder for council that tomorrow we have our open house on the utility rates and healthcare situation at the Hinton Center from three to seven. On Thursday, there's a healthcare worker appreciation barbecue in front of the hospital starting at eleven thirty. That'll run for about an hour, hour and a half, and Thursday, we also have the firefighters appreciation dinner. Uh, and then on Friday, we have Randy Smith's retirement and last day of work, uh, and that's happening. Uh, as well, and that is all I have for council today, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ross.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, I too, we went to the reconciliation event for the town of Hinton, and uh, uh, was very. Uh, very informative, I, I really enjoyed the speaker, uh, she was very uh, uh, made it a relaxed atmosphere. Uh, in a very difficult topic, um, you know, so I, I really appreciated that and, and to administration for inviting that person. And it was great to see so many people coming, coming out, um, and thank you to the community for their patience with the rec center being closed this morning to be able to uh. Also uh participate in that, so, um. With the rec center being closed this morning to be able to uh also uh participate in that. So, um. Uh, my apologies. I would really like to be at the uh appreciation for the firefighters. Uh, they've done outstanding work. Unfortunately, I will not be in town on Thursday evening to attend. So uh my apologies there. Um. And yeah, just to piggyback off of the the registration fair was very well attended. A lot of uh. A lot of different booths and new booths that were there. Uh, interactive things too. The Biathlon had an actual lay down and and take a few shots uh electronically. Uh, but uh, yeah, so there was quite a few things that were there. So well done uh in organizing that as well. That's everything I have to report.
Also.
Uh, just a question for the C A O in terms of my reports. And I don't want to get into the details, but in short. Um, I've had a citizen who I helped form uh some hint listens uh inquiries in the past. Procedurally, um. She's sort of at the point where. Sort of agree with the information she's received. Is there sort of a best? Best approach or a citizen who wants to sort of get a, call it a a second opinion? Uh, so to speak, do we just route that through hint listens again? Again, it's a citizen who I think appreciates having some assistance, getting it in electronically. But I'm just forwarding and the sake of not feeling like I'm just. Rounding the same problem back in administration, but also being sensitive to the needs of the citizen. What would that look like?
Through the chair to Counselor McGee, my recommendation is to address that to the C A O and request that the C A O review that.
Okay.
Um, you know, typically the hinted lessons will be completed by staff, but. You know, for for whatever reason, if somebody doesn't like the answer, there's nothing stopping from somebody from asking. Uh, asking myself to take a look at that situation. Um. I believe I know the particular case you're talking about. I have not reviewed that myself, but you can certainly request. Um, that I take a look at it.
Perfect. And just just to stress, in order to maintain relationships, as a counselor, not taking any sides on a particular issue. I don't have the expertise. But wanting to be sensitive to the request of the citizen. Thank you. Uh, and that's all I have, Mister Chair.
Thanks, Counselor Chambers.
Um, nothing to report, but looking forward to some of the events later in the week.
Um, Counselor Elsas.
Mister Chair, I have nothing to report. I didn't.
Uh, also Taylor. I went to the registration fair thing too, and uh it seemed to be well attended. Okay, thanks. That's other than that, I have nothing. Who do we have next? Uh. Uh, Chief Administrative Officer, please.
Thank you, Chair. I have included, starting on uh page fifty five, the report and the operating highlights for the month of August. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Just laws.
Yeah, thank you, Mister Chair. Just one quick question, I guess, because uh with the pool shutdown. Um, are are things moving along? As expected and or is it uh on on schedule to reopen when expected or? Uh, you know, it's in the early days, I know, but any any comments?
Uh, through the chair, I haven't heard anything contrary that we weren't on schedule. I know that yesterday we had a truck arrive with the slide. So that's a good sign. And uh with all of the deckwork, hopefully we can get that installed soon. So I haven't heard anything. Uh, that indicated her that would tell me that we'd be delayed in that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Um, okay, um, I have a question. This assessment audit that we get of the records. When's that going to go on? When's that going to start and finish? What 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 generally does it consist of?
Through to all of committee, uh, it is a program through the provincial government and I'm told random selection. It's the first time that I've been involved in one. Um, essentially, the auditor is looking to ensure that our assessment that we're having done through the contract of assessment. Meets the re- the regulations and everything with the uh the province. It's to help ensure that our. Um, values that he's putting down are within the plus or minus uh five percent that the province likes to see. And we have received a little bit of feedback from him um. On some of our internal. Procedures that he said they're not really a part of the audit. It's just good practices, best practices that uh he's added to us. He was here the third week of August, I believe it was, doing the physical review of the properties and uh. I haven't heard anything back from him since, but I do anticipate. By the middle of October, I should have a full report.
Okay, thank you. Any more uh comments or questions? Um, good. With that, do we go to the closed session? So, um, can I get a motion to go to closed session? How much time we doing?
Move that we uh go into closed session.
All right. Any comments or discussion? Okay, can you vote for or against going into closed session, please? And that one was unanimous. Way to go, Dean.